Yeah. How are you? For the workshop?
Nothing bad.
Yes. Oh, yeah. We're just here.
Nothing bad.
I didn't have an opening yet. All right, good morning, everybody. Uh, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Franchco.
Okay, this is the, uh, workshop in preparations for the agenda for a regular meeting tomorrow, May 8. And, uh, is there anybody who needs to go to the front line and has other commitments that have something to say? Sir, do you have anything you want to go to the beginning or sit through the whole boring meeting?
Well, um, but thank you, if I may, it won't be quick, I mean, it won't be long.
Yep.
But, good morning.
Come on up and, uh, come on up to the table. We have microphones up here. You need to, uh, start with, give your name, your name and who you represent.
Yes, sir, good morning.
And where you're from.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, my name is Reverend John Michael Oliver. I represent the AA Wellness Agency. Uh, we are represented here with the Mahoney Valley. I'm a Trumbull County resident, resident myself. I'm here just to present some of the support that we are giving to our honorable mayor and the city with a variety of initiatives that we have. Every year, we have our Wellness Day at the Cavelli Center. And a lot of individuals may think it's only just for, uh, Mahoney County or Youngstown. It is not. And we are here just to reintroduce ourselves. I serve as the Executive Director. And I wanted to just, uh, make that known, that we are here to be a support continuously to Trumbull and Warren. And just tell a little bit about some of our initiatives that we have coming up here, uh, all year long.
Sure, yours all years.
Okay. Well, the agency, we are represented, we are currently in eighteen major cities across twelve states. Right here, I see, oversee northeast Ohio. My cities are Akron, Canton, Cleveland, and of course, the Mahoney Valley. Uh, every year, we provide at no cost health screenings for men and women. Every year, at the Cavelli Center. Uh, it is a whole fun family field day. We have kids' play area, giveaways, raffles, and so much more. We have a current partnership in, here in Trumbull County with our TCAP, with the Mahoney Valley Manufacturers Coalition. Uh, Councilman Todd Johnson, uh, serves with Alex Herser. Our workforce director is Wasselo Monyoni in Mahoney County. Uh, but, uh, variety of initiatives that we have. We have a Mahoney Valley Fatherhood Coalition. We serve the fathers and men, if they need help with their education, our workforce, our visitation rights. We have our partnership with Jobs and Family Services as well. And we wanted to just share a little bit about what we do outside of just Mahoney County. And all of our programs are free. So I'm not here coming to seek funding. We know things, uh, happen, discretionary funds, but it's really, uh, I'm a little bit of old school, a little bit of new school. Uh, we haven't really been a present, and I wanted to make sure as I'm out, it is not an awareness campaign or politician, it's just to let people know. We are not here to compete. We're not here to reinvent the wheel. We are here as a collaboration. Uh, we have a variety of partners that's already here within Warren City. But we wanted to make sure that someone was visible. And I, they, despite to me, you had this meeting, and I just wanted to first introduce myself and just come with open arms, ready to hit the ground running. Again, we are honored to be able to be a part of Trumbull County and the Mahoney Valley. But our programs, we have mental health, um, mentoring, we have thirteen published Ameri-, um, medical articles by the Ohio State University. Again, not bad on my resume, but just letting, uh, this council know, uh, commissioners, that we are here in the Mahoney Valley, and it serves all demographics of race, it's not just one particular one. In certain areas, they are a little bit detrimental because of preventable diseases upon the black and brown community. But I here, uh, want to serve the whole Mahoney Valley. And I'm honored to just introduce myself and let people know that here at the agency, we are a community of change and would like to, uh, partner with, uh, the city of Warren.
Where, uh, where you, do you have a headquarters somewhere?
Yes, sir, my apologies. My headquarters office is in Columbus, Ohio. Uh, but my office is in downtown Youngstown, and we have some offices here in Trumbull County with our workforce. Yes, sir.
Okay, and what events do you have coming up as CEO of a flyer?
Yes, sir. Uh, we have our Wellness Day coming up. It is free. Our website is AAWellness.org. Uh, we are in eighteen major cities currently. Uh, but if you select Mahoney Valley, it will only pinpoint everything here in the valley that's coming up. Um, we have our partnership, of course, with the workforce. Every month, we have a job readiness course, uh, with our Fatherhood Coalition, as well as our mental health. We meet every fourth Thursday of the month. It's called Real Man, Real Talk. Uh, it's not just locally, it's national recognition with some of our speakers, and it's a free talk space. So, again, not leaving anything out for the ladies. Uh, we do have something initiative called Uplift Her. It does mirror what we have for the gentlemen. But again, our program serves as a one-stop shop and a hub for the community, uh, with our accredited college. Um, like I said, it's really there to be a help to the community, and any and everyone can come. We serve all three counties and even western PA.
So, AAWellness.org?
Yes, sir.
Interesting.
And this, your honorary chair is, uh, Pastor Guy Burney.
So, anything we need to know, we can get about programming, we can go onto the website and find out. You don't have any literature with you today besides?
Yes, sir, we do, uh, on, yes, sir, this is literally, if you scan the QR code.
Okay.
You can get right to there. But my personal contact, our business cards are digital. But if you ever need to reach me, I can give my number, my office and number is always available. Uh, my telephone number is three-three-zero, three-three-three, eighty-six-hundred.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Yes, sir, three-three-zero, three-three-three, eighty-six-hundred, extension five-zero-zero-two. That is the, uh, number to our office in downtown Youngstown.
All right, what's this JM Oliver you said, you led with that?
I'm sorry?
Um, JM Oliver, I think you led with something like that?
That's me, I'm JM Oliver.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I got all along first name.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, no, sir, thank you, Commissioner.
So, uh, how do we help get the word out for any of this stuff? Or do you want to come to the Commissioners' meeting tomorrow?
If I could, that's what they let me know.
Typically, we have press here today, but of course, today, we don't have it.
Yes, sir.
But if you would like to come by tomorrow, there's press tomorrow, maybe this, we can do a story on it as well.
Yes, sir, I'd be honored, and that's really where we're coming to this meeting, is to reintroduce ourselves, to just, uh, solicit the support, uh, to ambassadors. It's just really to get the word out. Again, all of our programs are free. Our funding comes from proposals, grants, contracts, uh, but it's really just to be a conduit of the community, let people know that the valley is coming together. Some of you I've met at the Warren Regional, uh, Chamber of Commerce. One of my big brothers in mind colleagues, uh, he got one of the Spirit of the Valley work, Mr. uh, um, Mr. Brantley. And we just want to let people know that the valley is here to come together, and I'd be honored to.
We're, we're here at ten-thirty tomorrow, if you want to give a plug there too?
Thank you, Commissioner.
You can certainly do that. Commissioner, is this out of line? Is this something that HR could possibly pass down to employees, especially our black employees throughout the county? Essentially. This is coming up and just to notify staff about that? Essentially, no, I don't think it's out of line. Uh, I think, uh, something you think we could do? I mean, is that not, your nonprofit?
Yes, sir, we're a nonprofit, five-one-one.
So I don't know if that infringes on any county policies or anything like that? But that is something interesting that I think we, you know, would be, there may be some employees that... And added benefit, yeah. It's a benefit of, hey, if you're off that day, if you want to, you know, go, I mean, no better way to get the word out than then, you know, do it that way.
I appreciate it, kind of, Commissioners. Right now, we have twenty-five of our current, um, sponsors that are here from out of the valley. Um, and one of them being the Cavelli Enterprises. Now, last year, we had ninety-two community vendors that showed up, literally, over forty-five-hundred in attendance. We screened over four-hundred-and-fifty individuals. So I am appreciative of that. Uh, if anyone decides to come on or any discretionary funds, that's always secondhand. Again, my point of my visit today is not to seek funding, it's just to reintroduce myself and what we do. And if that comes down the line, that's always welcome, because the day is free to provide for the community. But both mayors have been our honorary chairs, they have, they have given their full support. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that you know who I was and what we represent here in Trumbull County.
If you can leave that flyer there, we'll get that to our Human Resources Department.
Who may I give this to? Thank you.
See if we can get it out to the department, have it disseminate to the employees.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Oliver.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's, number one, expense of the minutes. Number two, approve the bills. Three additional appropriations shared department. Major? Uh, I don't know.
That's, that's her training expenses.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Martha Yoder?
So, yeah, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. I'll just go through these next three, um, including number three. So for number three, additional appropriations, that was a training expense. The transfer appropriations, Planning Commission is to reimburse, um, Julie Green for payment, uh, to East Gate Regional Count, Regi-, Regional Council of Governments for their annual meeting for economic development. Um, the clerk of courts is for copier lease, uh, for the title department, or copier lease payments for the title department. Board of Elections is the contract for shredding old documents. And, uh, just to note, they had, uh, apparently had a lawsuit where they had to hold on to a lot of documents. So then the shredding costs all at once after that was done were a little bit higher than anticipated. Um, you mentioned certificate, I'm going to let, uh, Bob handle sanitary engineer, but I'll go over the other ones. So the Board of DD is the FY Keeping Families Together grant. Um, the expense side of that one, as well as the next one, the Planning Commission for, uh, local share received, was, uh, done, approved at the Commissioners' April twenty-fourth meeting. Uh, NEOCAP, it's, um, uh, prescription medical reimbursement, and the expense side of that was approved last week at the Commissioners' meeting.
And the sanitary engineers, hundred thousand is additional revenue from our almonds wastewater treatment plant project, uh, and that's a transfer from our IRA.
Thanks, Martha, I still think we could have kept Tony in the hot seat a little bit longer, but...
Yeah, I was, uh, like, well, let me, let me look this up.
Tony owes me.
Number six. Establish the creation of the regional prevention and linkage to care collaborative grant services fund, known as Fund nine fifty-three, for use by Trumbull County Combined Health District. The Trumbull County Combined Health District is receiving a hundred thousand in funding from the Summit County Public Health District. Grant period is January one to August thirty-first. Through, uh, recommendation of Daniel Dean, Fiscal Officer, Trumbull County Combined Health District. So again, that's like we did the COVID fund last week, did that special number, and this is another grant that they have that they, uh, need a special fund number for. And number seven, execute twenty-twenty-four application for certificate of coverage, annual fee assessment statement for Trumbull County Petroleum Underground Storage Tanks for the term July one to June thirty, twenty-five, and authorize Commissioners' Office to forward said application to the Petroleum Underground Storage Tank Release Compensation Fund. Is this something we got a letter on, or is this something we normally do?
Sure, sure. This is, yeah, this is handled through the Commissioners' office.
Number eight. Accept the resignation of Ms. Barbara Rogers from her position as Clerical Specialist with the Trumbull County Dog Kennel, effective April twenty-sixth. Ms. Rogers' resignation letter shall be recorded in the Journal for record purposes. Recommendation of Michelle Goss. And number nine, accept the resignation of Ms. Kayla Roof, cell communicator in the Trumbull County nine-one-one department, effective May one. Ms. Roof's resignation letter shall be recorded onto the Journal for record purposes. And that's for Tacy. Uh, last week, we moved one employee down to part-time, and then that same afternoon, this Ms. Roof resigned. And then, we also had the new supervisor resign also on Thursday. Teresa Anderson, I believe, is in, which I don't, I don't see that on here yet, but I don't, it was something they received on Friday, I believe. And maybe they didn't get it on for the contract, so, her, we'll look into that. I did meet with Patty for almost four and a half hours on Friday, and, uh, to discuss, again, how to stop the bleeding in that department, and what we need to do, whether it be shift changes, hours, um, what adjustments we could make. Because right now, last week, we had a talk, and we saw where we're now, that's two more since last week. Which brings us down in like the sixteen-person level, which is at least ten employees below where we need to be. Um, so we really need to make a concentrated hardcore effort on hiring people as soon as we can. Three supervisors and now staff. Um, I got some ideas that I worked out with Patty, I need to sit down with Patty and, and, uh, Tacy. Again, um, one of the things we're doing is, we put the mandate last year to have policy and procedures updated by March. Nine-one-one does have them done, uh, they just need to tweak a few things, and I looked them over. And then we can adopt that here, then I'm going to meet with the staff there with the new policy and procedures and kind of have a staff meeting there. Alex has already had two, uh, but they, Patty requested that the Commissioner come in and talk to the staff there and, and see if we can assist, or what we need to do as Commissioners to, to get that department, give them support to get back on their feet where they need to be. And the staff there is hanging on, and it's, you know, they're already short-staffed, which adds an incredible workload on the staff that's there. Now with two more down, I mean, we're almost at the point of, I mean, we are at emergency staffing level right now, but we are at the point of, we can't lose anymore. We need to, we need to figure this out ASAP. And this has been a problem for the last probably four years, five years, we've been going down since then.
Ten years.
Yeah, well, maybe ten years even, yeah, actually.
It's always been an issue.
You talked to the staff, and they said it's been a problem since Tim Gladys was here.
Yes.
In the, uh, early two thousands, you know, that, it's been that long, late nineties, early two thousands. But they've had temporary intervals, and it's, it's just been a problem going down and down and down and down. A new, can, new digs will help a lot by getting them a new facility. A lot of the problem is the conditions of where they work, and, uh, you know, being in a basement, confined together, without windows, without being able to see the outside world, and then the conditions, and this is what I understand, I'm talking to some other Commissioners, and nine-one-one seems to be a problem in a lot of counties, keeping staffing there. And a big part of it is the state also, you know, they need to classify these employees as emergency services. Right now, they're still just clerical, as far as the state's concerned, with their retirement, with the, with the contracts, and what they can do, they are OPVA. But they're clerical staff, and if they, if they got that designation, that would help in a lot of, uh, it would open a lot more doors for us to, to give us tools.
To that, to that point, um, I'm tentatively scheduled a meeting for next Monday with Dave Thomas, uh, State Representative-elect Nick Santucci, and Sandy O'Brien to talk about central legislation, what would you do at the state level to, um, because it's just a systemic problem. It's a, it's a state problem that they need to, uh...
Yeah, please include Tacy or Patty in that meeting.
That's the only tentative part about it, is I haven't talked to Tacy yet. I was planning on doing that today, hopefully their schedule allows for that.
Right.
Tacy and/or Patty, so...
Right. Yeah, they've, I'm sure they'll have good input on that.
Yes.
And, I mean, we gotta turn over...
Especially with what's going on, even in the immediate.
Right, we gotta turn over every rock there.
Yes.
Every rock, every, every issue needs to be addressed, and we can't have another resignation letter, I mean...
Exactly.
I said that last week, and we had two after that.
I know.
And we, we can't have another one this week, or, or in any upcoming weeks. Okay. Number ten. Concur with Trumbull County Engineer, grant the hauling permit for P-I-N-I Motor Express. Right-of-way permit for ASW Pipeline Charter Communications. Uh, special annual supplier fleet permit for Hauser Services and Ken Chiarolo Trucking. Hauling permit for P-I-N-I Motor. Close the roadway, East Liberty Street, Gerard Bridge and Gerard, between four-twenty-two and the Gerard Bridge for the Mount Carmel fireworks presentation. That'll be July sixteenth from eight PM to twelve AM. I'm sure they're used to that year after year. Fifteen, award the only bid received as submitted by Faust Construction for the Tru Kinsman Sidewalk Phase Four Project located in Kinsman Township with an amount of two-hundred-fourteen thousand, seven-seventy-three, and enter into contract for said project. Uh, the engineers' estimate was two-fifteen, so they're below that. And that's good to get that started. Sixteen, concur with Trumbull County Engineers. And authorize the clerk of the Board of Trumbull County Engineers to advertise for bids for the TRU Larchmont Avenue Resurfacing Project. That is pretty rough. I don't know if you've been on Larchmont lately, but that's, that's pretty rough. And that is, uh, between Perkins Jones, um, and the city of Warren. And, yeah, that's, that stretch is bad. Seventeen, adopt the resolution to proclaim the week of May nineteen through May twenty-five as Tourism Week in Trumbull County, in conjunction with the National Travel and Tourism Week. Any big plans for that, Deb?
Yeah, we're going to launch a new website tomorrow. Very unchamatic relief. Yeah, we're excited, we're launching a new...
And who are you?
Oh, that's Thomas Carmichael, Trumbull County Tourism.
There you go.
We are launching a new website with your proclamation tomorrow, so we're really excited about it. You think you're going to be excited about it?
You'll be here tomorrow to talk about this?
Of course we will.
Is this something you want at the beginning?
I think we're okay.
It'll be in our mission.
Okay.
Seventh inning stretch, yeah.
Right.
Um... Good, with that, since we just finished up the engineer stuff and that, I had a meeting, uh, last week with the Amish community.
Yeah.
And it was, uh, four business leaders in, on Donnelly Road at a cabinet maker shop. And, uh, we talked about a variety of issues that they had. Uh, they, they don't have, or haven't had much communication with the government before. They don't get involved in state politics, they stay out of federal stuff. But they said the county stuff, some of the things they wanted us to know in the county is, is one, the tourism, they understand how much they're used to tourism, how much, um, they see the people drive by their houses, they see the people stopping at their, their shops, and they see people from all over the state that they do business with, not only in-state but out-of-state. And what I realized is, the furniture they're making up there, and we have a lot of furniture shops, we have a lot of hardwood shops, there's a big industry up there for custom Amish furniture and cabinets, things like that. They're producing things that go all over the world, not just here in Ohio, not just the United States. Um, there is a lot of business, uh, and a lot of economy comes out of that. Of which, we get the sales tax here in Trumbull County that we do get. And they've got semi-trucks, they got cabinet, or cabins that are coming down their street, they got sheds, they, I mean, it's, it's pretty amazing that, I mean, there's craft shops all over the state and all over the country that have Amish craftsmanship. And then the amount that comes out of there, I think, has been overlooked by us, or at least by government officials for, for a long time. So, they showed me some of the operation, we talked about that. The one issue they have are the roads. And they said most of their roads are just chip and tar, or tar and chip, and chip and seal. And they understand it, they get it, you know, they know that, um, you know, they don't pay into the license plate fund like the rest of the county does, but their drivers do, the semi-trucks that pick the furniture up do, uh, the people that haul them around do. And they have trailers, a lot of trailers to go with that too, that are Amish-owned, that people pick the furniture up, take them, and then bring them back. So I asked them, you know, what are the biggest concerns? They said they have four areas up there that, they said if we put you in an Amish buggy with steel-rimmed, uh, wheels, they said, you know, you're, basically, your ass will be sore for a week if you got to ride some of these roads that we ride every day. And, um, I, and they, they all had complaints about that, but we, when we got to the meat of it, I said, who have you complained to before? And it was crickets. So, they've been complaining amongst themselves, but they haven't reached out to the county engineer, they haven't reached out to the Commissioners, they haven't reached out beyond their trustees to say, hey, look at this. So I, I advised them to write a letter to the county engineer politely, here's the areas of concern that we have. They do, do maintenance up there, they do, uh, do service up there, um, a lot. You know, they're up there, and, and we've got bridge projects and road projects that do occur in the Amish part of our county. But then again, we don't ride the roads, and the engineer doesn't ride the roads, and the employees don't ride the roads like they do every day. So I asked them if they could set an appointment up or, or request an engineer employee to come up, take them on the ride, show them these four roads points, and I'm sure it could be addressed. There's some of them that, where they may need culverts, there's some of them where they've got, uh, moguls and, you know, in, in pretty rough areas. Um, so, I did that, I called the engineer myself also, and I told him to expect it, so he didn't think it was, uh, anything harsh or anything like that. And he totally agreed, no problem. Out of sight, out of mind, uh, I mean, they, they do understand there's issues. Um, but, just like with us, if, we don't know there's drainage problem unless someone calls here and tells us. We don't know that there's a, an issue with, um, you know, building or whatever unless we find it or somebody notified, but it isn't like we're out there every day and looking at everything that's going on in the county. So, it was a really, really good meeting. Um, they want to become more engaged in some things, especially the business aspect of what they do. Uh, they did invite, anytime that tours or anyone wanted to stop in and see their operation, or I had mentioned the possibility of maybe a feature, um, with tours and one of our guides or whatever of, behind the scenes of how the, how these cabinets are made and where they're made, and what is it from tree to your cabinet you put your dishes in or whatever, and they, they're pretty open to that.
We would be happy to do that. We have a one-page dedicated on our website, Amish. Since I've been here, we've really advocated, it's before, like, Great Lakes Publishing or Ohio Magazine, or even Tourism Ohio, that Amish country, and it's always Central Ohio, Millersburg, all that area. So, the past five years, we've been advocating to make sure that we are included as part of Amish community. We are the fourth-largest Amish community in the United States. It is in Trumbull as well as Geogga County, and would be happy to do that. My question on the traffic was, one of their concerns, four-way stop at eighty-seven and five-thirty-four? Because that's a concern of mine, because there's so much traffic going in and out of the end of the commons.
They did not state anything about that. They were more concerned with Donnelly Road, they said they have a, a, uh, cabin shed maker at the end of the hill that has semis coming down their road every day, hauling out all their, all their, uh, finished product. And he said those heavy, um, those roads aren't made for that, basically. They're dirt roads, they're clay roads, and when you bring a semi up and down the road, they know they're the ones tearing the road up. But what is their option that they have? They need to get the semis in there to get the products where it needs to go. And what he said is they do get some complaints of dings and scratches in their furniture, and they believe that it's happening in the first mile out of their shop, not on the turnpike, not on Route eighty when it's going to New Jersey. That it's, it's happening there because the roads literally shake the trucks so bad when they're pulling down some of the roads, just getting out of the factories. Um, well, that sure not, I don't know, but they, they believe the first mile is the worst for the, the, the product to get to the end user.
And I'll get with you, if you can give me the contact information, we'll reach out.
Sure.
Is, Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor, is Donnelly a county or a township road? Is that...
I believe, I believe they said...
That doesn't make a difference.
I believe they said that was a county road.
Right, I think it is.
Um, I asked that, I'm pretty sure he said it was a county road. Uh, Donnelly, Girdle, and they had a couple, Flag was one of them, and... Donnelly, Girdle, Flag, and one other one.
I think Flag may be township. Um, I'd have to look at them. Um, but, and, and I, um, I, I'm glad they acknowledge the damage, as a, as a former trustee, you know, we had difficulty with that. One of the problems that the townships and I think even the county faces with the roads is, these roads, you're right, they were never built for this. And so you have to go back, and in, at least in Farmington, we had to face that, I had years and years of neglect on some of our roads, and we had roads that were never meant to have a semi, and there were semis on it. So we had to actually put, do some weight limits because it was just that bad. Um, then we'd get permits for it, so we could keep track of what was going on, but, but it was like that. The other thing is, is, and I believe that someone, whoever was there from the engineer, like Gary, I guess, from last week, noted it, the buggies themselves do a certain amount of damage as well. And they just do, and it's unfortunate, but, uh, you, uh, they have to acknowledge that as well.
Well, he said, you know, I, they're okay with the chip and tar. They said asphalt is bad for them.
Right.
Because the horses will slip on wet asphalt.
Yeah.
And he said when a horse puts its foot down, especially coming down a hill, they're, put their foot down, they'll slide a little bit, and they need that slide, and they understand, but if they did that, everywhere that there is asphalt, there are grooves from where the horse's feet...
Right.
Uh, the, the metal on the horseshoes digs into the road and tears it up. They understand that. And they said that's where, they know they're causing a lot of the problem, but they said, they just keep throwing chip and tar on top of it. And he said they'd like to see once in a while a truck come up and chew the road up and spit it back out, like they do in other counties. He said Geogga County is good, good at that, Holmes County is good at that, and they see what other counties are doing, and they said our county, they believe does it a little different than the other counties do. And they said they just want to, they understand the safety factor, they're not asking to pave them, they just want them to be smoothed out a little bit so they don't, he said, you know, chip their teeths, they're going down the road.
And, and I always, and, and the trustee even, I, I was quick to point out, because yes, they don't pay the, the... And, and I always, as, as a trustee, even I, I was quick to point out because yes, they don't pay the, the tag tax or the gas tax. But most of them and a lot of them, a lot, especially the tradesmen, they'll own their own vehicles and they'll pay the tax themselves. And they're paying for the gas for, to do, to do their business. Um, the other thing that, and I don't know if they do this at the county level at all either. But at the township level, the different churches, the different districts, um, within our township, uh, they would actually, um, take a collection and we would get that. So they would donate-
Well, they do, they do give us forty thousand dollars a year, uh, to the engineers' fund.
They, they have like their own, within their churches, they have their own system of, uh, for lack of a better word, taxation. It's a tiding, but it's, it's, it's like my church, we tide, but it's a voluntary thing. Their church is a little more strict. Um, and so they, you know, they have, you know, they donate, like, they're required to give a certain amount for their school. They're required to give a certain amount for the things that they do at the church. Um, and of course, they don't have, you know, they don't maintain buildings for their church. So that's a little bit different too. They have a little bit. But, um, I know we, like I said, we got money. So they, it's not, it's kind of in our budget and our, uh, for the township, it was kind of a drop in the bucket, but it was better than nothing.
Right. Uh, Major, they also had a concern they wanted me to address with the Sheriff's Department is, um, they feel they're having an excessive problem right now on Friday and Saturday nights with young Amishmen loading up buggies, drinking and driving. And-
It's in buggies.
Yep. So, they, they, we've all heard of, you know, Rumspringa where they, they let their hair down for a little bit. And they have, you know, we, I know you've, you've had problems before where we've had, um, parties in the woods, things like that. But he said some of these roads now, he said that, and they've all got young kids. He said they have a couple of parents up there, just like any community, a little more irresponsible than others. And he said it seems like the same culverts all the time. And you see the beer cans on the side of the road. And he said they come down the road and you can tell it's late at night, the music's playing. And they've got, you know, eight or ten kids on a buggy. And he said there's no enforcement at all. And I, I see, I asked, you know, what, what they would like out of it. And he said, well, we'd like a couple to get busted. And I said, well, I don't know if we wanna open that can of worms. I don't know if we wanna do an enforcement project to target Amish. Of course, I think education's better in this situation. So if we can reach out to someone in your department, and I can give you the contacts, but we need the Sheriff's Department to have a link. To see if there's a way we can educate you in the schools, go to the businesses. Something where we can say, hey, we know this is going on. You need to knock it off or here's the consequences.
Yes.
Um, he, they're worried about going through stop signs, you know, people getting killed. Because it, just like with any vehicle, even though it's a buggy, it sounds funny and everything. But, you know, we all read about the crashes and stuff on eighty-sevens and Geoggas.
A buggy is not safe.
I, um, I had a sprinkler, but- I had a sprinkler at the end by my room. That, that worked. I would hear him come really far away, so I would just go out and turn on the sprinkler.
I'll, I'll reach out to, uh, Captain Mike Nudie. I know, uh, he and the sheriff-
They so love me.
-had some meetings with the Amish community in regards to just going over some of those issues.
Right.
Abuse, alcohol, drinking and driving. Um, and these were, you know, community events that they were, uh, asked to come to. So I can see when the last time, uh, they went to one and see if they can organize another one.
They said this is, this has started the last couple of weeks. And they said they know going in the summer, every Friday and Saturday, they're gonna have to deal with it. And he said it's one of the things that someone from the outside's gonna have to handle it because apparently they can't handle it on their own anymore.
And as far as enforcement, we can, uh, we can definitely, um, keep up enforcement and, and for just extra patrols in that area Friday, Saturday.
I, I think just the awareness and the education factor more than anything. You know, we definitely don't wanna be-
No.
Known as targeting, you know, the Amish and picking on Amish, you know, buggy drivers or whatever, kids. Kids are kids. Um, their communication, they don't have the internet stuff that we have. And our kids drive every day with cell phones and things.
With all due respect though, they start a lot younger.
Yeah.
And, and this is speaking to every single one of my neighbors. So they start a lot younger. And, and, you know, where our kids might start in high school, we're talking, you know, they, they leave school at fourteen and they start working. And they get treated like adults.
Right.
And so it's, you know, I, I understand the education part and I, I agree with that. But I wouldn't mind calling somebody at a party if you want me to. I have no problem with it.
We just, let's re, reestablish communication lines with some of the elders up there. Some of the, uh, business owners and, and I've got the, the names of people you can reach out to that I can- in private or whatever, if forward one of the, if it's you know, if you ever have them contact me.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Right, number eighteen. Receive and place on file twenty twenty-three annual report, Trumbull County Juvenile Court. Submitted by Juvenile Court Administrator Stacy Ziska. On behalf of the Juvenile Court Judges and Sandra Stable Harwood and Sam F. Ludon. Annual report is filed pursuant to Ohio Advice Code, Section twenty-one fifty-one eighteen. Nineteen. Authorize change order number two to Pollard Land Services, associated with the PY twenty-two CDBG Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program and the American Rescue Plan, Trumbull County Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program, for LMI household heat and shoot, increasing the original contract in the amount of twenty-six thousand sixty-eight. Uh... Nick? Fourteen thousand for one CDBG qualified household and twelve thousand for one ARP qualified household, the thirty-seven nine forty-three. So go from twenty-six to thirty-seven thousand. And authorize, uh, me to sign any related documents as necessary as three additional households submitted applications for assistance after construction began as a result of additional outreach conducted by public officials.
Nick Coggins, Planning Commission. Uh, so nineteen and twenty are both related. As it stated, there were three applicants that, uh, submitted for assistance after construction began. Uh, what our office did was submit those bids to the four contractors that already had contracts and were working in the area, connect people to those, um, to the sanitary sewer. Uh, these two, Pollard and TK Escavating, were the lowest and best bid for those three houses. Uh, Pollard's getting one additional house and TK Escavating is getting two additional houses on their original contract. Provide for those three applicants that came in after construction.
Thank you. Thanks, Nick. Twenty. Authorize change order number three. TK Excavating, associated with the PY twenty-two CDBG Residential Public Infrastructure Program, BW twenty-two ICS one, American Rescue Plan, Trumbull County Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program, for LMI household heat and shoot, increasing the contract in the amount from fifty-eight thousand, uh... Thirty-seven thousand for five CDBG households, twenty thousand to ARP households, to seventy-three thousand for five CDBG households and four qualified households. And authorize President Board of Commissioners signing related documents. Necessary is three additional households submitted applications after assistance as a result of public outreach. So same thing again, just have more houses added on as we recruited, looking for more sign-ons.
And there's a few more to go to, Commissioner, from what I understand.
Now, does this increase the amount of ARPA money or we already increased the rate amount for it?
Now, this was, we already, already had, this is not part of the countywide, uh, program that we're doing. When we got the applied ARP funds toward heat and shoot, uh, it was, I don't have the number in front of me. Um, it was six hundred and twenty thousand came from ARP in this project. We used four hundred and fifty thousand for the main line. I held out another hundred and seventy for these connections because I knew the CDBG wasn't gonna have adequate funds.
So we're covered on this so far.
Yeah.
Okay, twenty-one. Authorize the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Freightliner Cascadia, one twenty-six daycap tractor with optional wetline kit from Stoops Freightliner Dayton for use of the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, in the amount of a hundred and seventy-two thousand four ninety-one. Tractor will not be built until third quarter twenty-four. The previous tractor was damaged beyond repair due to an engine fire. That's the one that burned up on Route eleven last week?
Yeah. Do you wanna look at some pictures? Um, there is a typo. The, the amount should not be one seventy-two four ninety-one. The amount should be one sixty-two nine seventy. Um, the optional wetline kit is ninety-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. I added that to the base quote and I shouldn't have. It was already included. So, the quote that I, uh, included in my submission was for one sixty-two nine seventy and that's what it should be. Um, in addition, we are working with Corsa, uh, for an insurance claim. So they will pay some portion of this amount. We just don't know what it holds on to.
Oh, my. And this, it was pretty much-
We couldn't send it down to maintenance. Now Bill's guys take a look at it.
Pressure washing. Just pressure washing. I'm still in the truck. Pressure washing. I said you one dollar for our own vehicles. Parts. Yeah.
It's, it's hard to tell what it was. Uh, I can't tell you this, uh, we sent this into maintenance, I don't know, like, less than a week before this happened. So, uh, it, it was just a surp-, you know, surprising to us that something like this could happen with a vehicle that we had just sent in for a major, you know, for preventive maintenance. So we're, and with all that damage, it's almost impossible to tell where this fire started in there.
Oh, it's gone. No, trailer was good. Trailer, we-
Trailer's still fine.
Yeah, trac-, tractors.
And that's what we used to haul flag from the plant?
Sludge.
Sludge. We hauled down the Youngstown.
So Bob, Bob and Gary, do we have to get other quotes or is this?
This is through ODOT's state purchasing.
Oh, state purch-, gotcha. Just wanna make sure. Well, luckily, nobody got hurt.
Yes.
Minor heat stuff, but... Danny had to change his pants. Put that quote in there for a new set of pants, new set of drawers. Uh, twenty-two. Authorize sending my lie President Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to sign and execute all documents related to the application, execution, implementation of the Appalachian Regional Commission Grant App for the Pendleton Gilmore Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project Number Six S twenty-two Warren Township, Trumbull County. And authorize Trumbull County Sanitary Engineer to prepare and submit the Appalachian Regional Commission Grant Application to the East Gate Regional Council Governments for the Pendleton Gilmore Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. Tell me about this one, Gary. I'd be familiar with that name.
Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineer. Uh, firstly, so it's Pendleton. So we're missing a T up there in that first sentence. And Commissioners, this is the second part of the Meadowbrook Project. Um, the first project is just called Meadowbrook. Uh, it's approximately fourteen and a half million dollars. This is the second one. This approaches almost eight million. And there's a third one called North Levitt Road. Um, on this one, you can see, this is the cost estimate to date. It's gonna pick up over three hundred customers. And where you see that six five thirty-seven seventy from Ohio EPA, uh, that's where we need the four million dollars of principal forgiveness. So we, this one should score just as high as previous projects. Those nominations, or it'll be due at the beginning of September. And hopefully, we'll build this one. It's only about two and a half million dollars worth of debt.
So this is what we'll hope. We're Meadowbrook scored number one in the state. Last year, we opened this. It was up there next year.
Yeah, we want to score first in the state again on this one also.
Okay. Good job. All right, to complete and submit paperwork for Ohio Department of Taxation for the approval of transfer funds to security services from the special levy, special tax levy fund to the County General Fund per ORC fifty-seven oh five twenty-four. The approval of transfer funds is needed from the Ohio Department of Taxation to pay for the security services provided by Trumbull County Sheriff's Office, Trumbull County Children's Services. Children's Services will be responsible to compensate. The County Sheriff has invoiced on a monthly basis for the total amount not to exceed ninety thousand eight twenty-six. Trumbull County Sheriff's Department will furnish one deputy to Children's Services to provide police and security services, provided for twelve months, beginning January twenty-four and ending December thirty-one twenty-four. Um, Major?
Major Tony Villanueva, Trumbull County Sheriff's Office. First, we've had a great partnership with Trumbull County Children's Services. And we provided a deputy to assist them when going to, um, house calls, um, and, uh, doing their investigations. Um, just having that presence, um, there's times where the deputy is wearing just a polo and, um, you know, khaki pants. So, um, and there's times where he is wearing a, a uniform, depending on, um, the type of interaction that Children's Services is gonna have with, uh, with the families. Um, but this is so that Children's Services can, um, fund, uh, this position. So we would need permission from the Ohio Department of Taxation. We did this, um, it was after January, but that'll be paid for two thousand twenty-three, all of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, we just realized that we had to submit the paperwork again so we can get, um, uh, so we can send invoices to Children's Services for two thousand twenty-four, um, services as well. So, um, this is just completing, uh, the same paperwork we did for two thousand twenty-three, um, but to get paid for two thousand twenty-four.
And that was a long process in twenty-three, figuring it out, navigating it. So this is just-
Should be a lot easier this time around. Uh, we can just go off of the same-
That's the delay we have. It was the state's paying up more than anything.
Correct. So, uh, now that we, we got things going with, uh, that payment for two thousand twenty-three, we're gonna submit this for two thousand twenty-four. So, um, everything should be the same as far as the Ohio Department of Taxation paperwork that would need to be commit, uh, completed by the Commissioners and sent in by the Commissioners, seeking approval for those tax levy funds transferred to a general fund.
Gotcha.
Yep.
All right, and finally, to declare Warren Roofing and Insulating Company to be the best value for the roof replacement project at the Trumbull County Engineers Cortland Garage and authorize Mike Solinsky to commence contract negotiations with Warren Roofing and Insulating Company for the purposes of determining the total design, build services, service fees cost and improvement expenditure, design service fees, in the amount of sixty-five thousand three hundred and eight dollars. And authorize me, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute any and all documents required for this agreement on behalf of Trumbull County. Okay, finally, so we had the three bids. We had an issue with the first posting. We rebid it. We had another company jump in on the bid. We had it-
Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we didn't bid anything because it was a design build, so we had quality-
Qualification, I said. We, um, had interviews with the three to finalize it. Uh, two on the interview staff are from the engineer's office and the third was the-
Criterion architect, local architect.
Ergotech. And they came up with Warren Roofing and Insulating this time.
Yes.
Which was the new kid on the block that jumped in after the last one.
So, so we, we had four on the request for qualifications. We had four qualification statements submitted. We shortlisted the top three. In that top three, we requested proposals, requests for proposals. And that's the three that we, you know, went through the proposals and interviewed. Then we interviewed those three and then did the scoring on those three only. We scored the top three. The selection committee scored the top three.
And what was the scores?
Like, we sent them out. I have, I have them here for you.
How close were they? Were they?
They were close.
Number-wise, is it a number reading or?
Yeah, yeah. So they took the, the, the qualification statement and the score for the proposal. And those were added together and, and they're...
That's all. Do you got an extra one?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's inside there, Jimmy. Go to the end of this.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. How many projects do we use?
It's not typical that we, Tim's setting for a lot of projects. I know he's on the qualified list.
Yeah.
Kind of a one-man show.
Who's a one-man show? He was, uh, so Tim does a lot of work for the Trumbull County Fairgrounds. We've got a project coming up. You'll see he's involved with the, uh, four-age barn-
Yes.
On that one. He does a lot of work. On that one, he does a lot of work, Fairgrounds. Um, you know, when this came out, we're going to do design build, we needed a Criterion Architect, we reached out to him, he was available, he agreed to do it.
Okay.
As we finished up with the score, five fifty-five Warren Roof, DeSalvo five forty-five, and Dawn five ten. So, he won by ten, and third came in forty-five points less, and that was...
Would have liked to have seen a local company, but, uh, it is what it is.
Where's Warren Roofing from? Warren Roofing's from Cleveland. Yeah.
Sounds local.
Yeah. Any thoughts, comments?
So, Jim Taylor, Western Reserve Building Trades, uh, yeah, just a comment. Um, so I want to thank the Commissioners and, uh, Mike and Bill for going through that process. I know it extended this, but I think that, like you guys said, sure we'd love the local company, but I think that the, the numbers are the numbers, and that came out. So, I want to thank the Commissioners and everybody involved in doing that process. Um, you know, they're, the Builders Association represents a lot of the contractors around the area. They are in the process of talking over, putting together a presentation for a lot of, uh, entities, not only the county, but, uh, the cities and, and, you know, around the area, to do a presentation on all these types of builds, um...
I think that would be, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, and it's, and it's a third-party, um, you know, uh, entity that would be doing the presentations, that's not directed, in a...
Right.
But question and answer and stuff like that, so they're in the process of hammering out where, where a venue would be, maybe we do Trumbull, maybe we do Mahoning, uh, on a different date, so on and so forth, and invite all them entities coming in and, um, going over that, uh, process of the different types of builds, and then question and answers as well, so.
Mike Solinsky, Trumbull County Building Official. So, when you hear about, you know, this bridge was down, and they needed to get it backed up, and they fast-tracked it, and in six months, they got the bridge through permitting and got it built, those are design build projects, we need to fast-track these projects. So, so that was our thought when we looked at this, we're going to fast, this, this roof needs done, we're going to fast-track it. It didn't work out that way, Jimmy.
It's got to be the slowest fast-track in the history of...
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we, we, you know, we, we didn't, our experience with this one was, we were not happy with it.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that.
And it's the first one we did.
And like I said before, I said, you know, you don't throw out the, uh, you know, baby with the bathwater, right? So, and, like I said, I don't think that, because you had one bad experience, that that was, I mean, there was a lot of issues through this process. That it wasn't just the process, it, it wasn't the process. There was a lot of the other issues there with it. And then, I, I didn't have the numbers, I'm sure the numbers on the other, um, the other, uh, design build fees will be in this packet that you just gave me.
I could send you the packages. I mean, we didn't include, just because you can see how thick it is, the purpose of this document that, that Commissioners have, it showed just the timeline of what we did, how we did it, and then on the back of it is, is the O R C. Right after the, the selection committee results, you'll see there is the O R C, and you could just read through that, you could follow through the process, you know, how we followed that process. And, and we're not done with the process either, by the way.
Right, right.
You know, we're, we're going to, we're going to negotiate the, the G M P, what we talked about here before, with, with Warren Roofing, that, that, to get the, the, and that's our maximum project, our guaranteed maximum price.
Well, I understand, I understand that, but everybody gave you a design fees and service...
Yes.
Amount.
Yes.
And that, is that in this packet or...
Well, well, if you, the design service fee for...
The other, the other two individuals is what I was curious about.
It's not in this packet, we have those numbers.
Okay, I'll get them off you, that's...
Yeah.
No, that's cool.
Yeah, I have your email, don't I?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, and I, I assume it's public record at this point.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I could send it out, right.
I, I do think that that would be useful, and I, I know that this has been a, a long process, and it wasn't meant to be, but I think we learned a lot, and I think we could potentially learn a lot more with something like that, if we wanted to host, not you guys hosting, but a third-party hosting.
We're talking about doing that, uh, through the Builders Association and possibly the trades, picking up the cost of that, that'd be free.
Well, that'd be one...
And it would be up, upgraded training for anybody that would want to do something like that, we're having a, idea, and it's not just, and it's not meant, and as a, as a dig at all.
No, not at all.
It's, it's meant as Hubbard, Hubbard might be doing something, or Niles might be doing something, and maybe their department is sitting there going, okay, well, I have questions about it.
Right.
How do you...
Mike Solinsky, Trumbull County official. I spent my entire life in the construction industry. I grew up in the construction industry. I'm a registered engineer in the state of Ohio. When you go on the jobs, the guys doing the work know more than the engineers do, and that's what this capitalizes on. Our, our local contractors know more how to get things done and how to fast-track than, say, a design engineer, you know, who's going to go through the design they built. And, and so, the idea is, is you, this contractor's going to collaborate with the design firm, and you're going to, you're going to get it done. You know, it happens in reality all the time on the jobs.
It does.
You know, we call it a field change, but, you know, it happens all the time.
Yeah.
And so, this process is a realization of what we already do, and it's, it's a way to make it legal and to make it accessible for public entities.
Expedite, yeah.
So, the idea is sound, it's just, we weren't very good at it, that's all.
Jim Taylor, Western Reserve Building Trades, uh, you're right, Mike, and I agree with that. There are so many times you get on a project that's even bid out, and the architect has something drawn up, and the guys are going, this ain't happening. It, you can't do this.
Right.
And they're like, no, I draw it, you got to do it, and there's a process there. Well, this eliminates that issue out of there, and I agree with Mike on that. Um, but to get, to be able to go to one of them presentations for anybody, I think that would be a good idea.
Absolutely.
We'll see what we can do, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all I'll tell you is just fast-track the next step, we got to pick up some time from what we missed out on, and let's get them starting this build and get this garage up.
So, we're authorizing the, the preliminary design, and then we're going to negotiate with, with, get our G M Ps, and I'll be back once we know what our total cost is.
Right, right, I mean, you, you, we'll have this thing done by fall, right?
We have thinner pulls already, right. That's the goal, and then we, we covered that, uh, you know, we, we had three good interviews, they were all at the County Engineers' Office, and that was a large part of the interview process, was the timeline.
Right.
You know, we got to get it done.
Right, you feel comfortable with this one, that they're going to, they, they're going to get it done on time?
Yeah, this, this, this is reputable, huh?
Okay.
Very impressive.
Hundred years.
Very impressive.
Wow.
Very impressive, this company.
Okay, that concludes the, uh, agenda items. Do we have anything else? Bill?
Commissioners, Bill Hart, Trumbull County Maintenance, um, would like to put on the advertisement for the Engineers' Office for next week's agenda. I have the, um, um, the article for the advertisement, which needs permission to turn on for next week.
Engineers' Office?
Yeah, the office upgrades.
Oh.
Not the garage, the office.
With the windows on them?
Windows, yeah, the electric, the whole nine yards, so...
Okay, why today and why not yesterday or Thursday or...
I didn't get into it yesterday, and it's, it was, I didn't want to fast-track it, so, um, another week ain't going to hurt.
So, you can wait till next week, or you want it for tomorrow?
We could wait till next week.
Okay, wait till next week then, that's all right? Lisa?
Okay.
Good, okay, no problem. Um, anybody else? Let's see, uh, my next topic is, is enter the room now, parking. We brought this issue up, um, a couple of months ago, and we, when I got into work today, we got a big old bear parking lot between our parking lot and our building, we got a big old bear parking lot across the street, and we got a bunch of employee cars basically parked in the dirt on a gravel lot between United Way and a house there, that still isn't owned by us, but it's being utilized by us, um, graciously, because Mr. Thompson hasn't thrown us out of there. Um, we brought up that, uh, there are concerns before, that we need to establish better parking, not only for our employees, but for the public, and the opportunities are out there. We've had an offer from across the street, we had an offer from behind us, um, and when we brought it up before, it was brought up for the prosecutor that we needed to put out a bid that we're looking for parking, where we couldn't just go into negotiations on a parking price to lease one of the lots, and we had to do that. Um, I've heard nothing back from the prosecutor saying, go ahead with it this way, let's do it this way, here's what we need to do. We need to act on this pretty soon. And Mr. Valeski's here with us today, he owns the lot behind us, he, he reached out to us, said, hey, I got parking, you need parking, let's put a deal together. Um, what do we need to do officially in a public meeting here, then hash this thing out, to make it so that we can negotiate and see if we can, have a deal done before he moves on to another phase of planning and goes in a different direction with the parking lot. It's his property, and as he said last week, he can dig a garden there if he wants, and put a fence around and keep everybody out, you know, he doesn't have to have parking there, but, uh, when he acquired the property that he needed for our North Park, it, it, the property extended all the way to Harmon, uh, which was always utilized by employees and, and the public before. Um, it is prime real estate forest to utilize, it's closer to the building than we even park, and, um, as, uh, Mr. Valeski said last week, and I've seen many times, you know, I watch a lot of old people walk from the wayback lot all the way up to front just to pay their taxes, or, uh, you know, we, we need to provide, we need to do better than that. If, if we have the availability, um, you know, by no means is, is he or the people across the street strong-arming us with huge prices, you know, there's, there's decent prices we can negotiate to get this done, but we need to figure out the legality of doing it and actually make it happen, turn it from talk into some type of concrete, real negotiation to make this thing happen.
Um, Marthia, Trumbull County Editor, I would suggest, though, just waiting to talk to Mr. Danzo, I know that he wanted to be here today, but, um, we had to steal one of his employees to go to a B T A hearing, and he had to fill in for that employee today, um, doing, in court. So, um, I just would suggest, I, I realize you want to get going on it, but I would suggest, um, maybe individually you meeting with Mr. Danzo and actually getting it, you know, getting the process ironed out before you go too far.
So, I think what the process is going to entail, and then looking at his opinion, is he is, Mr. Danzo, the prosecutor's office is never going to allow us to sort of just go negotiate with one entity, because they, you need a request for proposals. You do, um, make it so that anybody could, you know, so you're not...
We put out a bid, we're looking for parking, and then...
Yeah.
Then we get the proposals and the...
Put out R F P out, and then we have to, and then we collect those proposals, and we evaluate those.
And if, if I understood correctly, he was working on that.
Okay.
From based on things that he would say within, within, within the meeting, that, that's just my observation, not anything that I talked about it, I kind of, as I, you know, you know, I stepped away from this, but, um, it was my understanding based on the conversations within meetings here, that he was working.
Okay.
He had that on his list, but I would strongly just suggest that one of you, um, sit down with him this week and just kind of figure out what, what the steps are. I wouldn't, to me, it, it was clear to me, too, that we needed R F P.
Yes.
Just based on what I read from, uh, actually from the county commissioner handbook.
Yes.
And what he had said.
Now, whether or not he's working on that R F P, I don't know, typically, those are done...
Well, what we can do is I can leave a message today, and if he's, is available and be at the meeting tomorrow.
That's fine.
If we can step it up to tomorrow, we don't have to wait another week.
Again, my understanding that it was just today that he was going to be gone, because I said, um, we needed Lynn in Columbus, and Lynn had other things on, on the calendar that couldn't be postponed.
Right, then we can see if he can address it at the end of tomorrow's meeting, and with advice of what it's to do in a public meeting tomorrow, and what he advises, and if he says, do it this way, then we, we do the R F P and...
You know, typically, he's not going to write out the R F P unless he chooses to, but, uh, that is something that the Commissioners' Office would have to do, but, I, I don't know where that stands with him yet, maybe he can answer that.
But you're still in agreement with me about moving forward with...
Of course, we have to.
Does, does Valeski have anything more to add?
Yes, same answer, I've been here since November, and it's on the prosecutor's desk. So, I was here last week, a member of the prosecutor's office was here, asked him about, he said, oh, Mike, that's just sitting here and going. So, I don't know if the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing, but I'm trying, I, you, how he approached me, that's how it's all started. Trying to be the good neighbor in the beginning, and all these people parking in our property, I turned, turned a blind eye, you know, we'll, we'll work out something. And I, your, uh, your maintenance director, I says, no, we're going to have to do something, I can't continue this forever. And, and the very next day, every car that has a county bid on, was off of our parking lot, across the street on Mr. Thompson's property. And, uh, oh, that dick up, actually, I said, do you know these people parking in our property? No. Um, but, I want to be the good neighbor, clearly defined, clearly defined in the Ohio Advice Code, how to negotiate. Clear, I understand it, I think it should be simple, not a big deal, I'm not going to, I just want to come up, if both parties go to the negotiating table with a sense of fair play, there's no reason why you can't come up with a agreement, we just want to be a good neighbor. I see what we were talking about, every day, I'd watch the people walking down the street with the walkers, and it just pains me. Um, and if somebody pulls into my parking lot, and they've got a handicap sticker, I refuse to chase them off. Okay. It's just, it's, it's convenient, um, I mean, you had your opportunity before, in a, in a catastrophe, I'm, I'm bringing the opportunity back to you, backing around. What we can do, I, I'm trying to help you guys out.
Rachel, are you looking for that email?
No, so, trying to contact the prosecutor's office.
See if we can find that email that he's talking about, because I, I read that, but it wasn't clear as far as the process, just...
I'm almost certain that the email talked about an R F P, though.
It would help if we didn't have to ask you for so many damn opinions all the time.
Right.
That are challenged. Well, I guess what, what we'll do is we, we will see if he can be here tomorrow.
Yeah.
Or one of his, um, staff, and to get a definitive answer from him tomorrow on what does he want us to do.
I have a feeling he's going to say that he's given us the opinion, and the R F P needs to be constructed by the Commissioners' Office and sent out.
And if that's the case, unless...
Yeah.
Do that, I'm sure he has no problem, um, following, oh, here it is, it is, February twenty-second. Yeah, last paragraph says that that's irrelevant. Yeah, last paragraph says that that's irrelevant. Let's follow B, C, and D. The contracting authority develops requests for proposals for leasing the property specifying the criteria to be considered prior to leasing the property, including the desired size and geographic location of the property. That would be asked, the contracting authority receives responses from prospective le- lessors with property meeting the criteria specifying the requests proposed by giving notice in a manner substantially similar procedures established for giving notice under section three oh seven eighty seven. Contracting authority negotiates with the respective leaser to obtain a lease at the best and lowest price reasonable possible considering the fair market value of the property and any relocated operational costs being incurred. So, according to what he is saying here, we got to do a request for proposal of what we need and what we're looking for. So that would be something, parking spots, maybe no less than certain amount and certain vicinity of the building. Um, because of course, it's narrow scope because there's only so many places around her that would even qualify to do it. Or if he says we got to do it, I guess legally, and because we did have a request from across the street, um.
We just have to detail the scope of what we want.
Right.
And how, how it's going to be insured. Is it going to be through your insurance, is it our insurance?
But we'd have to put that in there without negotiating what we want.
But, yeah, but, but that needs to, that needs to be.
You're going to write that, that's.
Yeah, right.
I'm comfortable with it, that's fine.
Right. Yeah, maintenance, maintenance and insurance is going to be a factor we put in here. In a minimum of, you know, thirty spots or whatever that we're looking for, a minimum of twenty-five spots. Um, and then.
Or maybe not even a minimum of twenty-five because it's making it more vague.
I think we probably should put a minimum because we don't want the house on Harmon to submit a bid over there because they got a driveway and we can put two cars here. You know, we, we want to be a little more, that's not going to work. You know, we, we know we need.
Although you can do multiple proposals then.
Need that. So, let's get with Danzo again tomorrow again.
Yeah.
Spell it out, write it up, and then we'll work, have Lisa work with the prosecutor's office to write up the RFP and let's, let's get moving on it. Okay. And maybe we can have something ready to bridge the post by next week.
Ross.
Please try, if, if he's available to do that. Good enough? I think that's all we can, all we can do at this point. But let's move as fast as the prosecutor will help us get this drawn up. And then, uh, you know, I'm sure the timeframes and all that's spelled out law, how long we need to, where we need to post and all that stuff for how long. And then we'll address it as soon as that deadline hits and then designate somebody to negotiate.
No, at that point, it's up to the commissioners to just select.
Right.
What, what we want to, no different than when we received quotes from, uh, anything from Bill or Sam Terry or Mike or whoever. So, big thing is getting this constructed, getting the scope and work done, uh, getting it advertised and getting all the proposals in.
Sure.
It's going to take a little bit of time, but not much.
Yeah, alright. Anybody have anything else? Okay, Martha, ARPA.
Alright, um, I, there's not a whole lot on here. A lot of this is just a review from the last couple of weeks. Um, I did, um, speak with Attorney Rogers on Friday and there was an issue that came up that I do need an answer on. Um, so Vernon Township, as you know, they had a request that was ruled ineligible. And, um, so they have gotten together with the county engineer and they have proposed that the county engineer do the project of the road resurfacing, even though it's a township road, and thereby be eligible for the ARPA funding under the revenue loss category for the county. Now, Ms. Rogers is a bit skeptical about this and that whether that would actually be eligible in that way, in that, um, conv- convoluted. She is however willing to research it if you wish her to do so. And so what I need to know, because she didn't feel comfortable doing it without the board's authorization, I need to know if the board would like to authorize that.
Yes. Wait for Mr. Kamal Miza. Waiting on your vote, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You need to review it again.
Please, I'm sorry.
So, um, Attorney Rogers has had some conversations with, uh, Vernon Township and the county engineer. Um, and they've actually proposed that the county engineer do that project of road resurfacing that was ruled ineligible.
Okay.
Um, because, and then in that case, it would be eligible because it's a county project.
Okay.
She's kind of skeptical that this is actually a, a, a good idea or a, an eligible idea.
Okay.
But doesn't want to proceed with any research unless she has your authorization.
But she's leaning towards it's not eligible?
She, she kind of is. I mean, she, I, I would, I would say skeptical. I wouldn't say she doesn't think it's going to work. She feels like it would require more research for her to find that out.
But this is Vernon's only ask, right?
Mm-hmm.
I guess we got to.
I give them a shot, that's what they're double down on, so.
So I will, I will let her know that. Um, pretty much everything else is just kind of stuff that she, she's still working on all of those pending ones. She kind of gave me a little bit of an update of where her thoughts are on it, but I'm not going to do that publicly at this point. And then, um, but she will be, she, she's close to some opinions there. Um, she doesn't have, uh, she did not have the answer on the, the local assistance and tribal consistency. Um, I did want to tell you, she was sick last week, so that was part of why things haven't moved as quickly. She was out. Um, the, um, I did put the ambulance request, um, that they're on the, um, and I already had the Hubbard, I should have just said that doesn't hang on. But those have been added. Um, and I have the, the mini bottom line sheet that I gave you. And basically the total available, if everything is approved, you know, everything goes through legal that we have on our list is seven eighty-five, four twenty-three, thirty-eight. That's where we're at.
That's if everything.
That's if everything. So that's everything on the yes plus what we've allocated. Now, just as a reminder too, some of, some of what we've allocated, some of those amounts may change either way.
Right.
I will say that my experience with the, the county projects, the Slowinski projects, is he has built in some cushions there.
Yeah.
So when we have some changes.
Typically, it's going to be more money there.
Right.
Rather than less.
Rather than less, but that doesn't.
That doesn't mean that.
It's guaranteed.
Yeah.
Cause there's always things that you find out, particularly on some of these, um, roof projects, the roof, the, um, particular, I'm thinking about the planning commission roof, that, you know, you know that we've opened some.
Sure.
Cans of worms there. Um, but, but for the most part, um, like the fairground stuff, he seems to have.
Yeah.
Given, given himself enough of a cushion and I don't think we're any of them. He does a pretty good job.
And then still no word on any, um, coming back for.
Right.
Approval.
Right, and I, I, you know, we, we kind of discussed.
We submitted six or five or?
We have, currently, we have eight.
Okay.
And that includes relooking at those two.
That's right.
Um, she seems close on a lot of them. Um, she kind of reviewed them with me, um, and I kind of know where she's leaning on some of them, but I don't want to say that because she may find something else out between now and then. But she did kind of explain where she's at. Um, I will say on the Tyler Foundation, which is a late dam request, one of the problems that, um, that's the study for Culver, one of the issues that she's having is she will ask Mr. Tedrow, the trustee, who is, I know it's not a Hubbard Township project, but he's a Hubbard Township trustee, who's sort of leading the way on it, for data. And she's not getting data back, she's getting a, the, the elevator speech. And he has to, he, if he wants this request.
Right.
He has to supply data. And that's not what she's getting.
Alright. Okay, Martha, and one question I have, these are just the approvals, basically.
The, the yes, the tentative yeses.
Yeah.
I didn't give you another copy of the allocated spreadsheet because it didn't change from last week.
Okay.
So you have that and so you have the other.
You know where we had, because I received a phone call, um, about the Peninsula project, again, from Mr. Cavelli and Mr. Piavalis. And that was one where they had put in, they said it was for two million.
You guys put that on the maybe sheet.
Right, so that's still, still pending there. What we talked about, from what I remember, commissioners, um, seeing what City Warren did first.
Mm.
And then we know, of course, that's such a big ask, bigger than anything we've done.
True.
Um, so that was something that was going to have to be addressed separately, differently than everything else. Make sure we took care of smaller pieces first, and that's a big piece that is further down the road than some of these other ones also.
Yes.
So, it is still something, um, that I, I believe in the project. Um, and now we have to look and see, I, from what I understand, Warren City is acting on some legislation with that or some funding at this point. They haven't yet, but they brought it up, were worth to bring it up this week in their meetings. So I think we, we see what Warren City does. And then maybe if we can get a, an updated status as far as timeline for that. And then the other thing is if we don't have the ARPA funds for that, you know, some of that stuff is new building, new things that I don't know based on some of the things that have been denied.
Property acquisition.
Yeah, you're right, I don't know that, that's going to qualify anyway, um, based on some of the denials that we've gotten already. Um, so we may need, need to fine tune that scope a little bit with the amounts and the scope and, and something if we're going to be able to fund it out of ARPA. If it's not out of ARPA, then long-term budget plan, something to, to see how to be a viable partner and still without, uh, breaking the bank.
And I think it, it's interesting to see what Warren, um, you know, what Warren allocates to City Warren. I think that's coming up in their upcoming meetings essentially, so that'll give us a, a greater idea of what, you know, we've always been of that mindset that we want to assist, especially when, um, political subdivisions have, have their own skin in the game too. So I think it's going to be telling to see, you know, what Warren puts forth and then it'll make our decision a little easier.
Sure. And we got community leaders behind it like we do, moving forward with it with their own money.
Sure.
It, it definitely shows something there as far as.
Absolutely. It's a worthwhile project. We all agree with that, obviously. It's going to change the complexion and the, and the entire, um, scene in, in, in and around downtown Warren. And we know that, um, obviously our townships are very important to us, but with a thriving county seat, uh, that can only benefit the entire county as well.
Right. Um, I also was reached out to last week by the, the people next door that are redoing the YMCA. And they said that they found asbestos in the ceilings and the, it's going to cost them an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, my.
And remediation and removal. And they asked if they could put in for ARPA funds for that. And being it's privately owned and it's that, I, I, I didn't see any way, shape, or form we would be able to accommodate. I mean, I was speaking on behalf of myself.
I agree.
And on behalf of the board. But I said, you know, you can always request a phone application out after the fact, but being that it was private and being with that, I don't, I couldn't see any way where that fits in our, our budget or what we have right now with the total available, um, and.
And, and not to mention, I mean, with, even, even if it would qualify, we're starting to scrape the bottom of the barrel here and we still have worthwhile projects. I'm going to look at MVSD today with, um, their director as well.
Alright.
I know you did.
Yep.
Um, I know Mr. Ruon has, has reached out to you about that other project, about the multi-jurisdictional, um, workforce development project for safety forces.
You have.
That's another good one.
Martha, you're a Trump County Attorney.
So there's other projects out there.
You have more than, you have more than twelve million dollars listed on the, the maybe sheet now. And some of those are projects you haven't even really had to.
Entertained.
To look at.
Yeah.
We threw those on the maybe, they came in later.
So I think right now, we got to.
That's, yeah, we're looking at twelve million.
You can't just give us another twelve million, Martha.
No.
If we say please.
I, I don't think I can find that much change in the couch cushion.
You'll only twenty till payday?
Well. That's where we're at. I mean, it's a great project. I'm glad that you have so many projects on it, but it's.
But at some point, we, at some point, we have to.
Right.
Cut because.
There's only so much money.
We, we're just having, all that's going to happen is we're just going to have to cut more projects if we keep accepting them.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Right. I'm hoping, of course, I'm hoping that a lot of these projects come in under what they need or they, we get a lot of money given back. And we're, we're at that point too where we need to see if they really need what they're asking for. We get a couple of them here that are pretty big ticket ones, um.
Well, and we, um, the deadline, the, the FAQ that came out from the final roll, uh, the deadlines for spending and all of that have kind of changed a little bit. I don't want to get too far into it, but because of that, some of our more recent, um, and we, we noticed we had a, we had an amended agreement last week. Um, Tanya and I, or I'm sorry, Attorney Rogers and I are working on doing, um, a blanket amendment to all the agreements to make all the deadlines consistent. Um, and so one of the things about the deadlines is, um, you know, we have that end of the year deadline where we have to allocate all this money to them. They do not have to allocate it before the end of the year. That was one thing that wasn't there. They don't have to encumber it, but we do.
Gotcha.
Alright? After the end of the year, and if we get back money, we, we are allowed then to reencumber it for another project. And we're allowed to, to approve worthy projects. So even though we have that initial deadline of all of this money has to be encumbered, what, if money comes back, we can look at other projects and, and fund those with, with that, right? So, that, we want to make though, everything consistent with, uh, what the actual, that what the FAQ says. So, um, we, I don't have that yet. She and I are kind of, we're trying to bat around with, with Christie because, um, her account would be, uh, Christie's historic, because Christie's going to be the one helping me with checking all of those things as they come in and the compliance as far as, um, their accounting, right? And so we kind of need to come up with a realistic date for us that will, that works. And, um, and then Tanya is coming up with the language and then we'll put the data.
Okay. Uh, yeah, we, we got some, uh, recent news, Commissioner, about, um, you know, the, the, a lot has been talked about, uh, security, about the Court of Appeals, uh, building that, um, it's been a long time coming, even in their initial, uh, Supreme Court study, right? That they.
Yes.
Uh, had, had done, uh, that we need to, uh, secure the building a little better. Bill's been working hard as far as, um, what started out as potentially a fence and a wall, uh, going around the building is now, um, after talking to Judge Eklund.
Today.
Today, uh, whi- which we thought was, was more prudent anyway, would be, you know, a six foot, eight foot, whatever. Eight foot, um, wrought iron fence potentially.
Yes.
So we're back to just a fence.
Check it just a fence, so we don't have to, um, you know, I, I understood why they were talking about a wall and a fence, but I, I think that, uh, I, I thank Judge Eklund, number one, for working with us. That would have been obviously a much higher cost, but, um, uh, but we're back to just a fence. And I think that he has a judge's meeting with the rest of them this week, I believe, tomorrow?
Uh, I'm sorry, Thursday.
Thursday. So, uh, hopefully he, he, um, the, the individuals that, that were in favor of the, of the fence and the wall will now see that Judge Eklund, uh, is, is talked to Bill. And Bill, if we need to be there as well, I don't mind to be there.
I, I mentioned, Bill, I mentioned it to Judge Eklund with Chabani there. I said, if you need me to come to the security meeting, which I don't necessarily need to be there, just within the house. Um, I told her, feel free to call me. I'll just, if I'm in route, I'll just hop, skip, jump over there and explain what the architect was there with today, uh.
And the architect was there today.
He was there today and talked with the judge and Chabani. So, um, we have a guardrail around ninety-five percent of the building, so that would stop any potential car potentially coming through the fence. The wall was just an added feature from another judge from another county. So, um, do we need that extra money expense? No.
No. Judge Eklund says, like, we could just get by with the fence, and we're gonna discuss it Thursday and move on from there. I do need to get some quotes for some paving.
Yes.
I'm going to reach out to Mr. McCloskey, the city engineer, about trying to maybe help them pay for their part of it, since it's all their property coming up and through to the Court of Appeals. But if they're willing to pick up some help here in their property, we'll work together and make that happen for paving. So parking lot does need paved as well.
Okay, Bill, while you're talking enhancements to county property, we got the grant from Senator O'Brien to redo the walkway behind the Ag Center. And there's a birding event coming up next week, big bottom-bond type birding event. A lot of people utilize that area. So it's been addressed again about that walkway bridge.
Yeah.
Are we gonna fix it? Are we not gonna fix it?
Yeah.
We have the money in our account, from what I understand.
Yes.
What do we need to do to fix it?
I'm waiting for somebody to give me some contact information to reach out for a quote. Taylor? Sorry. I was waiting for them to give me a... Couple contractors to reach out to give me some numbers.
Okay.
So that's what I'm waiting on.
So are we looking for contractors to reach out to you to do that, publicly?
No, just send me a contact. No. No. I just... Somebody go look at, give me a number, because I know what we have, I know what we could do, and I just need the contract number to get started, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And from what you've seen in the tails, steps and walkway?
It's just stairs, stairs and treads, pickets, handrail. It's just...
Wooden.
It's all womanized, yeah, it's been destroyed. They used to ride ATVs up those stairs back in the day, yeah. Oh, trust me.
That's why they need to replace them.
Oh, I'm telling you, they're broke. They used to see the tracks. They used to ride their quads up the stairs.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I just need a... I need a contract to get their price and...
Narrower stairs.
Oh, they're already that wide, so. We're not gonna reconfigure the staircase. We'll just fix and repair what's there.
Yeah, put a post in the middle.
I thought about doing that, too.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, if that's what tore up the last one, we gotta do it, and then we gotta make arrangements.
Yeah.
Do you put posts in the middle or in the middle of the bridge or something?
Isn't that what they do if they...
Bike trail.
Bike trail?
Yeah.
The one in the middle, and it drops down in case...
But this will be permanent. We don't need to have a drop for any reason.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Well, can you get on that?
Yes. Wait on a phone number.
Yeah. And Martha, I guess we need to address, being that I see the media's here with us now, the questions we got yesterday. I got some, I'm sure you did, about the hospital making the announcement that they filed bankruptcy protection.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And my thoughts initially are, we addressed it with a letter. We asked if something were... Was going to happen, that they may help make a smooth transition and that, that they keep communication with us as if there's anything we can do in regards to that. This is not unexpected. It's something the whole business community knew was inevitable. I'm glad to see they went the route that they did, bankruptcy-wise, where they stay open and they work through the process, which means nobody is out of their jobs at this point. Nobody here has been affected directly. Time will tell what the next step is for Stewart Group as far as where they reorganize, where they dump their assets into. But I'm still very hopeful with this decision that this was the lesser of two evils as far as the route that they went in bankruptcy. And I think we... We're gonna get a lot of questions on it. The community's worried, nurses are worried, the doctors are worried. This is an expected step of what, from what we've seen, what we've been forecasting for the last six months. So we've had the meetings with them, the business community's had meetings with them. I know they are still exploring potential suitors to take over the hospital, and through this announcement here, I think that builds us a bridge for them to keep working, keep providing the great service, keep people employed, and let people do what they do best there. They're nationally acclaimed for a lot of services they provide, and we got a great working staff there, a labor workforce, and some of the best doctors and best employees in the world that are there. And we hope that through this reorganization that Stewart Group is doing, not only Trumbull, but Hillside will maintain the service expected of them and they're traditionally known for. And moving into the future, we'll have a smooth transition, whether it be with a reorganized steward or a new management, ownership, that it won't affect their citizens in a negative way.
Great, great. Yeah, I just saw it in the paper. I think that, obviously, you're cautiously optimistic, but from a business standpoint, you understand why they're doing what they're doing, but it's all for naught if they don't reorganize and if they don't restructure financially. And, you know, the hospitals we have in this area are actually not the issue. The hospitals in different parts of the country that operate over, you know, thirty, thirty properties, I believe, and some of those are the issue, and they're dragging down financially the ones that are more profitable and the ones that are thriving. So hopefully, they can reorganize, hopefully, they can reevaluate their assets and come up with a plan that selfishly is good for Trumbull County.
Right.
And is good for Stewart Health. Here, we have, as you mentioned, far too many employees that rely on Stewart Health, both, you know, economically, directly and indirectly, from what Stewart Health produces here in the valley, not only from a public health and safety standpoint, but from, you know, just, obviously, the economic standpoint, which is enormous, enormous. So I'm still, again, cautiously optimistic, and I hope that those talks continue and that reorganization happens, and that we keep those jobs right here in the valley.
Now, we... You know, just for the record, too, we have not been directly responded to by the hospital or regarding this bankruptcy. This is their business.
Yes.
Something that they're doing. I'm sure we will have talks. I'm sure the business community, the chamber, the other entities involved in this. The business leaders in this valley are gonna be on this, and I'm sure they're monitoring every step of the way of this bankruptcy procedure, see if Stewart plans on staying in Ohio or not. The big thing is, by them doing this route, is everybody still has their job.
Yes.
We still have a great workforce there, ready to continue doing what they do, and that I think the... We're most hopeful that this shows or paints a picture of the bridge being built for us to have a better opportunity in the future.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we know we needed to... Stewart needed to do better than what they were doing. It's not the labor staff at all, it's not the doctor's staff, it's not the administrative staff at the hospital here locally. This is specifically the result of poor management in Texas and Massachusetts and other areas.
Yes.
Our hospital here, Stewart Trumbull Memorial, has been profitable, has been providing great service, and they're just the result of having bad managers up top outside the area. I feel confident still in the local leadership we have here. They've been very open with us in the meetings we have had with them, and they've been thinking of the valley first in their decisions they could make locally. Now, this, you know, isn't a local decision. This is a national decision for the bankruptcy.